Good evening and welcome to the June 9, 2014 regular meeting of the Waterloo Community School District Board of Education. I hereby call the meeting to order. And just to note, Pam Arndorfer, who is our board secretary, is under the weather today. So we've got our friend Sharon Miller back here, who did this. We're all happy to see. We're sad that Pam's gone. Obviously, she feels better, but we're very happy to see Sharon. Sharon as well. Yeah. And here on Dr. Norris's final regular school board meeting tonight. Thank you all for being here. And now, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Now, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Now, Dr. Norris will read the school district's mission statement.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you, Dr. Norris. And the first item on our agenda is a very good thing. This is a board celebration, and it's a signing procedure for the International Baccalaureate Program, which has been approved and will be going into East and West High Schools. This has been a long time coming. I went back and checked. I think the 21st Century Expanded Learning Task Force was formed in September of 2010 at Dr. Norris's direction, and here we are in June of 2014. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tara Thomas to give us some background information.
Thank you, Mike. I just wanted to acknowledge the crowd is here because of this incredible celebration that is culminating tonight with the official authorization of our program. And we should thank KCRG, the ABC affiliate out of Cedar Rapids, has come up if you all want to see your faces on the evening news. Sharice Orpman is the district coordinator for the International Baccalaureate Program, and so she would like to come up and set up the stage for this official signing. Sharice.
Well, about a half an hour ago, I was going to wing it, and then I thought we could be here all night, so I wrote a few things down. Tonight is a historic evening for the Waterloo Schools. We will sign the letters of authorization to offer the International Baccalaureate Diploma Program at both East and West. This process took support and commitment from our families, whom many of them are in the audience this evening; the IB staff, who are a relentless group of reflective professionals; cabinet members; high school principals; and, most importantly, the leadership of Dr. Gary Norris as a change agent to bring this opportunity here to the Waterloo Schools. It has been an honor to support a program that extends our advanced options, impacts the rigor of advanced pathways, and leaves the students prepared for success in higher education, to be active participants in a glowing global society. And more importantly, the IB Diploma Program broadens our perspective as a district and addresses our mission that was just read by Dr. Norris, to graduate from the Waterloo Schools prepared for college, career, and citizenship. It is my privilege and with huge hometown pride that I present the Waterloo School Board with the official letters of authorization to offer the International Baccalaureate Diploma Program at both East and West High School, beginning the 2014-15 school year. See how brief that was? It can happen. At this time, I would love for the IB staff, if you could stand up, and I'm going to have them join us today. Dr. Norris, if I could have you step down to the signing table in the front. Mike Young, our school board president, if you could please step down. And at this time, East High Principal, Marla Pageant, could you please join us up front? These three key people will be signing the letter of authorization, and we'd like to encircle them with the IB staff. This is a process, and it's a "we," so could you join us and encircle the table? At our signing party this evening, I would also like to have Dr. Jane Lindeman showing support and solidarity as the incoming superintendent.
And at this time, Byron Phillips is going to be here to represent West High School. He is the IB administrator and the assistant principal at East High. She can take that. Official for West High. Thank you for coming. Make sure you grab an IB cookie on the way out. It's our official logo, and we're going to be seeing that a lot. Thank you. Please. Can we have the student standards? IB students, could you please come up too? Pretty impressive when these young people took a risk and had nothing to compare it to. The next closest IB Diploma Program is in Des Moines, and they accepted this opportunity knowing that they would have to work harder, and we're so proud of them. So let's give them one more round. Woo! And many of you should know, they actually start school again tomorrow to do IB Summer School.
Oh, gee. That is a culmination of many years of work. Thank you all for being here, because it took a lot of people. There were committees of parents and staff. There were staff members that worked very, very hard on the application process, and it's really exciting to be here today, so.
Thank you for believing in our kids.
Oh, thank you. Yeah. No, we're just, we're thrilled, and we're proud. So thank you all.
And Mrs. Orpman gives me a lot of credit for it, but it was Mr. Young that told me I had to do it, so.
I just, I just asked about it. Several times. How are we coming on this? Just, just questions, yeah. You deserve the credit, so. And Sharice, we want to thank you in particular as well. Way to go. Great work. Yes.
Let's hear it for Sharice.
I was going to say, there's no "I" in IB, but there is.
Yeah, that does, that does sound like a great note to go out on. Thank you, Sharice. All right. The next item on our agenda is a presentation on the IS-3 program. We've had that presentation every year here now for a couple of years, and I don't know who is here for that. Danielle and Josh. Yeah, Danielle Myers at West High and Josh Payton's at East High. And we can move this on the agenda as well. It's just more an informational update on this. So all of you in the audience, bear with us, if you could. And after this on the agenda is information from individuals and delegations. And I'll go through and read a card on that, just to talk about the process that we go through for that. Then it'll be the time anybody that wishes to speak can step forward and address the board. But if you bear with us for just a minute or two longer, we'll wait to see if we can While we're sitting here waiting, why don't we just move around the agenda for now, and we'll go to that public speaking portion, because I believe there are some people here that would like to address the board. So why don't we go to that right now? This is item seven on our board agenda. It's information from individuals and delegations. So this is a time where all those who wish to address the school board during the board meeting may do so. And I would ask that you please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Mrs. Miller will hold up a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining and a red card when your time has expired. At that time, I'll ask that you conclude your republic remarks. Please try to keep your comments respectful and constructive. We're all here with a goal in mind, trying to help our schoolchildren, so please keep that in mind when speaking. Please also avoid criticizing the job performance of specific individuals of the school district. Because personnel matters are confidential, they must be handled through proper channels and not in a public forum. And finally, we try to provide this opportunity for public comments, but it is not designed necessarily as a back-and-forth discussion, particularly for items that are not on the school board agenda. At times, we'll try to help with information if we can before or after the meeting, but if we can't, we'll still have to proceed with our board meeting agenda items. And if you're uncomfortable with any of these guidelines or speaking to the board while on camera, please understand you're free to communicate individually with school board members at any time, email, telephone, and so on. And with that, I'd invite anybody who wishes to address the board to step forward, and please just state your name and your address.
Brian Malachuk, 424 King Bard Boulevard. I want to address the board tonight in regard to the boundary proposal that's on your agenda for this evening. And just a couple of points of information. Our oldest daughter started Kingsley, I just did the math a little bit ago, in 2007, and our youngest of three daughters will finish her Kingsley career in 2019. So we're a Kingsley family at 424. But in regard to the boundaries, you know, we've been at Kingsley through the crowded period. We understand the crowding issues in a couple of the district schools. My wife and I were part of the larger group that looked at potential boundary changes about four or five years ago and understand that well. In looking at what's on the agenda, what was posted on this website today, my wife and I are in favor of what the proposal contains. We think that the boundary is especially rated to Kingsley, and the Kingsley District makes sense to balance the numbers as well as maintain a nice boundary for our, our part of town. So want to commend the people that worked on that activity. We know it's not easy when you're dealing with boundaries, which can be emotional. So, so thank you, and we support the proposal, including the grandfathering for a couple of years on the, on the trailers.
Great.
Good afternoon. Doug Foss, 233 Doyle, Evansdale, Iowa. I see some, some familiar faces up here. Dr. Norris, one of your board members once told me he retired several years ago, and I, so I'm two, three months after that, asked how he's doing, and he informed me that he's so busy, he doesn't know how he ever found time to go to work. I hope you have the same problem. I, I'm here tonight to address boundary issues also. I'm wearing a couple of hats. I am the mayor of Evansdale, but I'm also concerned citizen of Evansdale. It appears from looking at the map that several actual Evansdale addresses will be impacted by this boundary change. I would ask you sincerely to reconsider that. We've always considered not only Evansdale but Elk Run Heights. Part of living over there is the fact that we do have an elementary and a middle school that our children can go to. The impacted area that I looked at, I could be wrong, but it's a very small slice of Evansdale, the southeast corner. I'm not even sure there are any students living in that area. That's a short-term solution if you would just move the boundary back to the Evansdale line there. A longer-term solution, I can tell you right now, we have a number of housing starts in Evansdale. That may not be a record, but it's going to be considerably more than it's been in quite a few years. I know Elk Run Heights also has a housing development that they are going to be anywhere from 12 to 20 houses going up. A long-term solution, it's a great problem to have that our population is growing over there. I know both cities would love to keep their children in those two schools. Thinking a little bit outside the box, you always heard that every problem has an opportunity. That's not necessarily true. Sometimes problems are just problems. But this one has an opportunity to take a look at how we deliver education over there in that part of town as maybe something you could take district-wide. I know Elk Run is still school property. I don't know if they're at capacity with their preschool or not, but you might want to take a look at a preschool K combo over there. Move some of those children out of Pointer. Free up some room to keep the children in those two communities in their two schools. Or quite frankly, I think when Pointer was built, it was built at 500, I think the day it opened, we had 502, if I remember right. So it is going to be a continuing problem. You might even want, I wish you would take a look at possibly adding on to Pointer. And do everything you can to try and keep people with an Evansdale and/or Elk Run Heights address in Pointer and in Bunker School. I know we'd really appreciate it over there. And I would like to thank everyone who was on the committee. I know it's kind of a thankless task at times, and it's, it's tough, but I would like you, thank you for your time and effort you put into it.
Yeah. Can I have a question? You were one of the negotiators, if I remember right, when it was decided to combine Pointer as opposed to redo both Jewett and Elk Run separately, right?
Correct.
What was, we knew that it was going to be at capacity.
We knew there were going to be issues then, but I thought, of course, I never put it in writing, but I thought there was a understanding of the board members at that time, I understand boards change, that the board would do everything in their power to keep Evansdale and Elk Run students in the new elementary school. And at that time, when they combined the two, there, there were some questions, particularly from Elk Run Heights parents concerning that possibility, that it would be at capacity or soon over. That's why I was suggesting, I don't, like I said, I don't know how far near capacity they are at the preschool, but I think that'd be something worth looking at, maybe changing the way you deliver education over there. Maybe K pre or K1 pre or whatever. And if, I'm sorry, if anyone would like a map of Evansdale, the boundaries, feel free to call me. I'll run one over. You can come over to my office, and we can overlay them to see. It's a very small slice. I think it impacts 12 to 15 houses right now with the boundary changes. I'm sorry.
The other question I would have is, is there any estimate of the number of additional students that we might see if the housing developments, you know, I know you don't have an answer right now, but maybe we should take a look at that and try to get some projection of.
It can give you a pretty good idea. One nice thing about the community I live in, in Elk Run Heights, is we offer quality, affordable housing, a low-tax base. Most of the houses that are going up in the city I'm in are, I guess I'd call them a little higher end, $300,000-plus, but those come from citizens who are currently there, so that frees up the houses that a young family can move into. So I could realistically project out in, in five, six years. I know we've got some new commercial properties coming in too, and people want to live near where they work. I don't think it's unrealistic to expect 25 to 30 more elementary-age students in the next five to eight years in those two communities.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you.
And Doug, and Ryan, and everybody else in the audience, stick around, because this, we've got, our consent agenda is next on our, our board agenda, and we'll go through that next, but then we'll talk about the boundary changes as well. So stick around as we go through that and kind of that discussion as well, and then can hear from the committee on what kind of the options are at Pointer in particular.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, please.
Terry Stevens, 1629 Ackerman Street. I come before this board again dismayed at the lack of concern for African-American children in this school district. Apparently, there is neither a visible nor an invisible plan to improve the educational status of this population of students. As I see it, disproportionate numbers of them continue to be warehoused into behavior programs designed to promote conformity, not education. Board members and community representatives have undertaken a $36,000 initiative, traveling around this country to find new perspectives on education, but when will this district address the needs of our children? Marva Collins, Jeffrey Canada, Dr. Stephen Perry, and other leading African-American educators have laid out blueprints and roadmaps for effectively and successfully teaching our children. Yet this board, this district, current superintendent, and many, but not all of his cabinet, administrators and teachers fail to undertake proven techniques and strategies to educate our children. The newly proposed boundaries speak clearly to the board's decision to place bricks and mortar above these children's education. A comparison of Orange School to Lincoln School shows continuing discriminatory action against African-American, other students of color, and the poor. Orange was built on almost 30 acres of land and can house 605 students, yet it is functioning below capacity. Lincoln was built on approximately 1.5 acres of land and is busting at the seams with students, most of whom are African-American and Latino. How does one school rate a facility and land almost 14 times the size of another school in the same district? If the Board of Education had fulfilled its longstanding commitment to build a new Longfellow School, I sincerely doubt these new boundaries would even be necessary. What is happening to an entire generation of African-American students can adequately be compared to educational genocide. The policies, practices, and procedures of this district regarding the treatment and miseducation of our children are in direct opposition of Brown v. the Board of Education, which calls for equal education for all. That means facilities, books, teachers, and class offerings to be equal for all students. That is not the case in the Waterloo Community School District. The continued discrimination against these children is an undeniable travesty. They remain the least represented, most penalized, most dropped-out, most pushed-out students in the district. This board needs to make an honest, concerted effort to prioritize attainment of equal educational opportunities for not only African-American students, but also other students of color and poor students in this district. It is my sincere hope that the incoming superintendent takes on this challenge successfully. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. There was quite a bit of stuff there. I don't know, we're going to get to the boundaries here later, but good news, Lincoln is, it's much bigger than 1.5 acres, and so I think on the school sites, we get that information to you as well. For the rest of it, we'll talk about our educational attainment later on. I don't know if we'll get to it in this meeting or really in the next meeting, but things are going up and getting better, so, which is good news. Anyone else?
On the, could we have those reference? Are you going to submit that, what you have in writing? I wasn't able to get all your references.
The information I got came from your school website.
Okay. Oh, okay. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Good afternoon. Tim Oval, 414 Prospect Boulevard. Just one quick question, because I'm a little confused. When was the boundary program, this boundary proposal, put together?
It's been put together over, yeah, probably the last two to three months.
Two to three months. Okay. Very good. That's just my only question.
Great. Okay. Thank you. And again, stick around, because we'll be going, we'll go through our consent agenda next, and then we'll, then we'll get to the boundary issue as well. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda, which tonight consists of, first, the minutes of our last regular board meeting on May 12. Next, personnel appointments and adjustments since our last school board meeting, and there are a number of those here just because it's the end of the year. Also, bills due and payable between board meetings. Next, we have one open enrollment appeal for a student. Next, we have the Old Irving Elementary School demolition bids, and this is for the actual demolition of the building, which is a fraction of the cost of the asbestos, I think, but this is actually to take the building down. And then finally, textbook adoptions for the Family Consumer Science Program in our high schools. Are there any items that board members wish to be removed?
Item D, Doug.
Okay. D, and that's personnel appointments and adjustments?
Yeah.
Okay. And I'll ask that item E, bills due and payable, be removed, because I'll abstain on that. Okay. Hearing no others, recommend, excuse me, ask for a motion to confirm the consent agenda with the exceptions of items D and E.
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Okay. In discussion. Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to exhibit D, which is on page six.
I'm a, the Board of Education approved the personnel listed items as listed.
Thank you. Move to end second?
Second.
Okay. You got that? We're, we're trying to keep you on your toes tonight. All right. Discussion.
I was just wondering, I see we have eight returning leave of absence and 24 approved. Is this a seasonal thing, or is this an extraordinary high number of leave of absences approved? Or can you just share a little bit more on that?
I think it's pretty routine. Individuals who are taking transition leaves or possibly a health leave, it's just a part of the routine. We're continually allowing people by contract to take that time off.
So there's not been a change in policy or change in contract that would contribute to a higher number?
It's contract language. Nothing has changed in that manner.
Okay. So just.
It's pretty situational.
Okay. Is this a normal number, or is this kind of high?
Well, I think it's pretty normal. You may, you may be seeing them all as, at once, as opposed to.
Normal for the end of the year?
Yeah. Pretty normal for the end of the year. But they're ongoing. And for returns, we typically send out a communication about this time for staffing purposes to inquire if individuals are going to, to end their. purposes to inquire if individuals are going to end their leave, so you'll see larger numbers that, with that returning.
Now, when they end their leave, do they go back to their original job, or do they, do you, are you able to place them where?
They, they come to the first opening that they qualify for.
Okay. So not necessarily?
Typically not the job that they vacated, because typically a leave is over a semester. So we would post after, after 90 days. So it would typically be another job that was vacant for which they qualified.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question also. The two high school counselor positions, I see one of them is leaving, and the other one, I think, is going to become the IB?
Yes.
Counselor?
Mm-hmm.
And so those two positions have been replaced by these other two positions?
Yes.
Is Blair feel, excuse me.
Now she just left.
Yeah, I think she left.
Okay. Is she comfortable with doing all of the IB? Is that?
I don't know if I can speak to that, Jane. Dr. Edelman?
She told me she's excited.
Sure, absolutely. She's very excited.
Because I know Amy was really excited to be a part of it too, and then that kind of fell through, so.
Yep. Right. We've, I've met with her personally twice, and have a meeting with her tomorrow, so she's very excited about it.
Good. All right. Thank you.
Definitely capable.
Yeah.
And Bev, I had a question too. It seems like there's quite a bit of turnover in the vocal music and.
That is unusual.
Yeah. Just wondering, there was any rhyme to reason to that?
I think it's just circumstantial. I don't believe that there's any particular reason why they happen to, but because they're all very personal reasons why individuals are leaving, following a spouse, moving to a new district, I mean, moving out of town, there's not, I don't believe there's anything that would cause us concern.
It was kind of a sour note, however.
Oh, gee.
We had a couple more in. We've got some time. That's right.
Yes, there we go.
Dr. Smith, I had a, and I've known this, you've told this before, but I'm forgetting, the transitional leave, transitional leave, is that just kind of a general category?
Yes. If a person's going to go to another job, or if they want to take a year off to explore other things, one individual was, was going to be an inventor, so he took some time off to pursue that interest.
And by doing that, though, you hold, you hold your place here?
You hold your position. Yes. It's up to a year, and then you can request an additional year. And at the end of that two-year period, if you have not returned, then we contact you and say, this is your opportunity to return, or we sever your relationship.
Or resign.
Yes.
Lose your position. Okay.
And there's also on here, assistant softball coach at East. We haven't changed the ratio or the rules from the.
Not yet.
Not yet.
From the high school task force, or I'm sorry, the athletics committee.
Okay. So that will be, I mean, at some point, we need to do.
We're going to discuss those findings.
Yeah.
Okay. And so that may end up adding.
Yes. Additional positions.
Yeah. Additional positions.
But this is, but this is not due to a change in?
No.
All right.
In ratio, no.
And it sounds like in, in addition to the positions that was discussed with the athletics committee, the procedure, I think, too, and some of the regulations as well.
And Bev, most of these resignations, these openings, have most have been filled, or will they be filled there during the summer?
We're filling as we go. We got out to a number of job fairs, and some of our rock stars, we just offered them contracts without a place, those who would accept them. So once the internal shifting happens, then we can offer opportunities to those individuals who've made a commitment to us.
Okay. And none of these positions will be eliminated? I mean, that, okay.
No.
Okay.
And then, one other thing, I have not seen the retract leave of absence. What is that?
Retract leave. If someone requested a change, a leave of absence, and then decided not to take that leave of absence, and you need to do that for IFRS records?
Okay.
To make sure that they get credit for every year, and they go through the board agendas, so.
Okay.
We want to make sure that our records are clean.
So like, they applied for leave of absence, but they decided they didn't want it?
They said, never mind, I'm coming back. Or they may not have even left. Sometimes it's at the end of a, of another type of leave, like if an individual would be gone for birth of a child and plans on taking an extra leave, and it says, never mind, can't take it, I'm coming, no. And they're returning.
While you're giving us these definitions and explanations, can you also explain involuntary transfer and how that works?
Okay. An involuntary transfer is when the district has, gives an individual a choice of positions and gives them first pick of a position, and it would be based on district need. So it comes into play in most, most recently with the PLA S schools, because there are some certain expectations that individuals have to commit to in that particular school. It may be additional time during the day, it may be additional days in the contract year, and so based upon a person's personal situation, they may not be able to accept those additional responsibilities. So in, instead of them being penalized, we say, well, we will give you an opportunity to have an involuntary transfer, and we can, you will select first from these open positions before the district at large has an opportunity to select. The reason that I would say not being penalized, because you can only have a voluntary transfer every two years, and so we wouldn't want to give a person an opportunity to move and say, but you can't move again for two years, when in fact, was our choice to, to support that.
Thank you.
And the last question I had on this is with the TLC grant, the teacher leadership component, is that, not all those hires are necessarily on this board agenda, correct? Will that probably be the July meeting?
Yes.
Or even, maybe even August?
Yes. Some of them are just tran, changes of assignment?
Yeah.
But some will be.
Some, okay. Gotcha.
Actually, most of them, all of them will be changes, changes of assignment.
So far.
So far.
Right.
Because they're current employees of the district.
Right.
Okay. Okay. That's all I had. Any other questions? Okay. If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to Exhibit E on page 13. And the recommended motion here, this is regarding bills due and payable, the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the bills due and payable, and the bills paid between board meetings. Get that motion on the table, please, on the floor. Thank you. End second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. And just before discussion, I will abstain from voting on this, because as an attorney, I represent a client who's paid by one of the bills. Any questions or discussion on this one? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair abstains. Motion carried. Now, we're at the boundary, elementary school boundary, agenda item, and this is Exhibit I, and it's on, starts on page 50 of our board packet, and for everybody in the audience and at home, it's the, there's a three-page report, and then some of the maps that we've got in our board packet as well.
And I have some extra maps here.
Dr. Norris has some here, if anybody in the audience would.
Lay those on the table there, Jane. Please.
Thank you. And we'll get those passed out. What we'll do is I'll start with the recommendation for the motion, and then we'll start the discussion. I'll do that first, because this is a, something that's been in process, sort of getting to your question on the, how long this has been going on. Our school district facilities committee has been meeting here for a while, and spent a lot of time on it here in 2014 on this topic, and it's a topic I think the school district looks at every year. But this recommendation that we have here in our board packet is that the Board of Education move the process forward by setting the date that the board will deal with the boundary changes and directing the administration to send individual letters to families with students that live in the areas to be redistricted, approve the practice of grandfathering for these changes, set the date the changes become effective, as July 1st, 2015, and then finally, set the permanent desired capacity of Kingsley Elementary School at 360 students, and officially determine that the modular classrooms will need to remain for another two or three years. Get that motion on the table?
So moved.
Thank you. End of second?
Second.
Okay. In discussion, with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Norris for some background information.
Well, sure. Actually, the, as one of our speakers said earlier, the enrollment saga at Kingsley has been going on for, you know, basically since the school was rebuilt a number of years ago, and when the children came back to Kingsley, that were neighborhood children, and then the school began to populate in a more natural way. In 2010, we added 54 students, I believe it was, I don't have the number right in front of me, but because of No Child Left Behind, those children have worked their way through now into where there's only 24 of those children remaining at Kingsley. Now, this, and I'm just going to touch on Kingsley first, because that involves the modulators as well, but this is about balancing the entire district. Kingsley was one of the, one of the schools that had 458 students, and we've determined that the desired enrollment is 360. And I, I started using that word for the purposes of tonight, of, we toss the word capacity around quite a bit, and there's two or three different definitions of capacity. I won't bore you with those tonight, but one has to do with fire marshal capacity, and then the other has to do with how you run your programs, and being able to continue the curriculum that we offer. So our, our desired enrollment for all of the reasons of the schools are listed on page 51 of your agenda, and it so happens that Kingsley is 360. We started looking at rebuilding, we always knew the modulators were going to be temporary, and temporary is defined as want to get rid of them as quickly as we possibly can. You'll probably hear from speakers tonight that say, it doesn't sound very much like temporary. Well, I, I get that. I, I fully understand that. But we did, we did at one point, think in about 2011, we would take a serious look at expanding Kingsley to make it a regular 480-size school, and then not only was the price just unbelievable, 6.2 million or something like that, because we would have had to rebuild the cafeteria, the gymnasium, the, the library, the music rooms, it, it just was never set up. And then, coupled that, I think the facility committee would tell you, with the impact on the neighborhood, it's already, the traffic there, like many of our schools, early in the morning and late in the afternoon, is already kind of nightmarish. And so the, the recommendation to the board is that we establish that as a, I forgot to say, that when we reprice the facility study, it's up in the $9 million range now to rebuild Kingsley. And so it, something that's interesting, and I think Lyle would probably point this out, is that we were able to do that same addition to Orange while we were constructing it for a million bucks, or something like that, and that's because the school was already built, already built bigger. So anyway, specifically only regarding Kingsley, we do need to keep the modulators another couple of years, and the Board of Planning and Zoning approved that for three years, so that we wouldn't have to bring it back a third. We gave them assurances that if we're done with the modulators after two, we'll, you know, get them out of there. We don't particularly want them around, we want the kids having more playground space, et cetera. Regarding the other, regarding all of the school boundaries, we, Shanley and Mike and Lyle and I sat down, and we said, what are our values that are going to drive this process? I think one of them was proximity to the neighborhood school. That was one. Another one was, Lyle, do you remember that there was, you know, crossing certain areas, certain roads are, are big issues? Do you remember some of the others we looked at?
And we wanted to minimize the total number of disruptions.
Absolutely.
If possible, and if we did need to disrupt, hopefully send students to a closer, to as close a school as possible, and to also maintain the integrity of each, each district, each attendance center.
Sure. And so we started with all of those in mind, and began to whittle and make changes on a computer with the programming and look, and each time we were through, we could get a printout like you see on page 51, that, that gives you the before enrollment, and then you make the changes, and then it gives you the, the after, if you were to do it tomorrow. That's the, you know, the after. And so that's why we, we've said several times in here, use the language, that after a period of time, we think the enrollment will come closer to, to that number, because of the grandfathering. And, and so, again, working our way through each of those attendant zones, you see that Becker was one of our most crowded schools, Cunningham was way under, Highland was close, Irving was under, Kingsley was way over, Kittrell was close, Lincoln was way under, as much as 60 kids or so, Lou Henry was way over, Lowell way over, Orange a little under, and Pointer considerably over. So we just went about trying to address that, following the, the values that Lyle and others have mentioned, and we started then, after we were somewhat thinking the map that you have in front of you would do the job, and then we started talking about these additional One, about the grandfathering, it's very typical in our school district, that we don't disrupt a particular child in the middle of their elementary years in that building. We, this wouldn't apply to siblings under grandfathering. And then we also, I threw in, kind of at the last, because we were getting down to well past kindergarten roundup, about having you consider the delayed implementation. We can, you know, we can certainly make that work either way, but it's probably preferable, given that we're going to be into July, likely before these are finalized, that, that we make them officially a year away. And then, the whole issue of dealing with Kingsley in some demonstrable way, that the board could kind of have closure to, to Kingsley, to where people weren't, weren't going to be worrying about it, or discussing it all the time, or what are we doing, or what are we, why are you buying houses, or what are we doing this? The houses were needed, by the way, for both expansion and playground, so we certainly don't have too much there. I think I'll stop there and see whether there are questions. Mike, or Lyle, or Shanley, did you guys want to add any other thoughts, or things that we talked about?
I would support what the mayor had said. One of my comments as we went through this was to keep Evansdale Elk Run kids at Pointer, and I still support that. I believe when we went through this, we looked at the dots on the map, and wherever there was a child that was attending an elementary school, there, a dot would show up on that address. Well, the way we drew this particular boundary, I didn't realize, but apparently it does cut into part of Evansdale property, city limits, so.
We can easily.
There is potential for someone to move into that area and want to attend Pointer, and again, I would support that.
Sure.
Minor change.
There were no students currently.
Correct.
And there were, we didn't know about the housing starts there, so.
And this is just, just to be curious, Marfa says, we're talking about the area that's just east of the Cedar River, I guess technically it's probably more north of the Cedar River. Are you looking at, what you were discussing, that's the line that changed from Pointer to Orange?
Is that Case Beer Heights?
No, it's not. Actually, it's off McCoy Road. It's.
Oh.
You were talking about the section though, from Pointer to Orange? This down here?
Correct.
Okay.
If you look up that map, there's a, there's a triangle that.
Yeah.
That, that road right below that is actually part of Evansdale.
Oh, I see.
It's not a very big piece, but there are 12 to 15 houses in there.
I see.
So, it's just a, and that, that would at least bring all the Evansdale addresses back into the Pointer District for now.
Gotcha.
But the one on top from Pointer to Highland, that strip running along North Elk Run, that...
That is not Evansdale or Elk Run Heights.
I guess I would make a few comments. One is, I do not like boundary changes. I think it's disruptive. One is, I do not like boundary changes, I think it's disruptive. And I think we always need to respect all the considerations people have when they purchase a house, one of which is where their kids go to school, so that's not new news. So, you know, I'm going to support this because it is sort of a last resort. I think we've looked at all the alternatives in each of these schools and at some point, you just need to, you know, the overcrowding pain threshold has gotten high enough and we're not sure about the trend line. And as Dr. Norris indicated, this won't be effective for another year. Just a little bit of history, ten years ago, we were sitting here discussing whether or not to tear down Kingsley in particular. And then we looked at the trend line and there was a huge increase in the number of students that were starting to be in that whole Kingsley, Lou Henry area. So today, that trend line has continued longer than we thought, so today both schools are But that trend line, it can't continue, I mean, at some point, and it's called gentrification, I guess, where the, all the longtime homeowners pass away or move to care facilities or something, or, or.
Florida.
Or Florida. And, and younger families with, with kids move in and that seemed to be the case in that neighborhood more than, more than any other one. So we have, we had a hundred students a year we were gaining in that, in that area, which is just amazing. And it seems to have continued to gain, so if that trend continues, then even this won't, won't be a final solution, but we can't assume that either. The other thing I think that plays into it in my mind is the, is the whole domino effect of the high school task force and what we do with that facilities and that's coming up, I think, later, later this month, but that could possibly cascade down into middle school and even elementary effect on facilities. So, so we won't, don't want to lock ourselves in here particularly, spend a lot of money on facilities that, that may not fit as well into the long-term plan as, as it appears today. So, so that's kind of, that will always be an unknown. It's hard to anticipate the, the changes in student population in each attendance area. So, what we tried to do here was minimize the total number of changes. If there had to be a change, move them to a school and, and in most cases, or several of these cases, the area we moved is to a closer, a closer school physically. So I think we, you know.
Well, Lyle, I just, can I reiterate that the three of us that worked on this, but none of us, none of the seven of us like to change boundaries. That's not easy, that's, that's difficult, people do buy homes and do all that and, and one of the reasons that I'm going to support this is because that we are honoring those students who are currently in our buildings and that have started in a building, knowing that they're going to, you know, thinking that they're going to be at Kingsley or Irving or Lowell or Cunningham. And, and I think that's really important and I, and I think that we should get some credit as a board for, for not just saying we're setting this, we are allowing our families to, to stay where they are and I think that means a lot.
And from a taxpayer's perspective, I mean, we, we really need to utilize the facilities we have. Again, we always want to allow, you know, some capacity, additional capacities building if we can, so we don't have to constantly change these boundaries. So that's kind of a hard thing. I do have one question on the, the permanent desired capacity, the definition of that, is that, what is the impact of that? Does that tell us that legally we can't accept more students in that, or what exactly?
No.
No.
And I would change the word in C there, I don't know why I put capacity there, I was trying to use desired enrollment on the chart.
Okay.
Desired enrollment is a, it's where we would like to run all of our schools.
All right.
Another comment on Pointer is, I think in our discussions, we did bring up the fact that even after this, Pointer is still going to be full. And so, of all our schools that we potentially would be putting an addition onto, Pointer's pretty high on that list. So, depending on how things go in the next few years, if Evansdale and that area up and through Raymond continue to grow, we're going to have to do something else about that and maybe Gary would want to mention that a little bit.
Well, no, it, it's clear that it's coming at some point in the future and it's also clear that structurally, the way the facilities were built at some of the schools, especially the, the newer schools that weren't just remodeled, that were actually built from new, they, their gymnasiums, their libraries, their cafeterias can handle more classrooms and so, it, it's very foreseeable that one of the first actions of the facility committee would be to look at expanding Pointer.
Well, we were under ten thousand a few years ago and we've gained several hundred students.
A year.
A year since then, so we're going to have to do something at some point and so these are some options that we're looking at.
And I have a few comments as far as, I'm wondering if the Cunningham-Callenger change might pull some more students back over to Cunningham that were out of that, because Cunningham is about ninety under their desired enrollment and with changes.
That's the one unknown.
Right.
It's unknown, it's, it's a possibility that some of the people that decided to ask Mrs. Turner to go to a different school may come back. Cora, have you had any data on that to date? Okay, she hadn't had anything, no calls or questions right now, so that's one we really couldn't predict.
Right.
And that may take several years because, again, a lot of parents want their students to stay in the same school through.
Right. Right. And I, I also can foresee with the new, like IB programs and how we're going with the high schools, that, you know, it may bring more enrollment, elementary too, up, so we need to be cognizant of that also. And I was wondering, I am totally in support of keeping, if at all possible, all the kids in Elk Run and Evansdale in a community school because I, I think that's logical, if we can do that. And then looking at the map, I just was wondering, you know, with the overcrowding, if it was consideration, because Kingsley is where a major issue is, why wouldn't we pull the boundary line to Kimball and make it Kimball all the way down? Then that would do the whole area from Kimball over to Baltimore, those would feed to Kitterell and Irving versus Kingsley. To me, that seems logical. Now, I don't know, I haven't worked on this at all, just looking at this.
I think the, yeah, I mean, we did look at that at one time, we did run those numbers and I, I think the thought was, as Lyle has just stated earlier, to, to try to disrupt as, as few as possible. Would that be?
Yeah, until we're more certain of those numbers and what those trend lines are.
Okay, because it, I mean, that would cut Kingsley down quite a bit, I would think.
Because one of Mrs. Haskell said it was.
But that goes all the way down Kimball. I mean, I guess.
That affects a lot of houses though.
But personally, I think it's easier for people moving in the area that here's your line, then you're jutting here, jutting there, and I know sometimes you have to do that, but straight lines to me seem more logical, you know, rather than moving here, there, because you have the Kimball as your boundary to fourth and then you switch over and go down to Baltimore, it looks like.
Those are two of the new areas though, that over to Kimball is a switch, right? It moved west.
Yeah.
That line moved west. It didn't used to be on Kimball and it kind of went to that point.
But I'm just looking at the Kingsley overcrow.
I think that might have moved when Kingsley opened? I don't think it was when Kingsley was there initially and then when Lou Henry opened, I don't think it was there, but then I think when it switched back and Lou Henry was split into two, I think that area was added.
The front page here does.
I tried, I couldn't figure out historically.
Without addressing either Sue's question or Mike Kinsey's comments and Lyle's comments, please know that all over the United States, year after year after year, as populations change, there's only two reasons to reboundry. One of them is horrible and the other is really kind of good news, bad news and that one is, if the district's growing, Kingsley, that's, I think, good news for the community. The bad news is when we're in a declining enrollment situation, the board's closing schools and boundaries are shrinking that way and we hope we never get.
Oh, no, I think it's a good problem. I'm just, the Kingsley issue continues to be an issue with the trailers with, so I'm just looking that, to me in my mind, and like I say, I have not gone through all of this, so that's just what I'm thinking from blind eye looking at this.
As you know, I'm not a fan of trailers either, so it was, it was to me kind of a, a tough one, but still, it's, it's the number of households that would be disrupted was kind of the final.
And just for everybody in the audience, it was not on the facilities committee here, but just in asking and talking to the members, what they're looking at and what, we've actually gotten some lower board packets and it's available online, is you're talking about the dot maps and that yours, I mean, it literally comes down to, okay, if we put the line here, what would it do to this school or that school? It's the, what's it called, Safe Link or the software program?
Planware.
Or, I'm sorry, Planware.
Yeah, if anyone wants the, the specific zone maps, they look, they look like this and there's just dots and it's from these that we'll send out all the letters, if, if the board decides to go forward, we'll send out letters to each address.
And so.
I just have, I have a question too that's kind of, so I'm just asking this and I probably should have called ahead of time to ask this question, but as we're looking at boundaries, do we also look at the number of free reduced lunches? Is that something that we take into consideration?
Oh, we do. Yes.
Okay.
We did that and it wasn't.
Didn't change much.
Didn't change much. I, I thought it was going to change, change more.
How far I had to come down and sit through on that?
But, and Lyle, I guess I appreciate that you want to disrupt less houses, you know, with, you know, but also, we are disrupting houses, that, that's a given. When any boundary change is going to disrupt a house, a household with kids. So, which area do we target that's less disruptive? I don't know. That, I guess I'm just looking at what would be better for the entire school versus disrupting houses, because there's a lot of houses that are not going to be happy and are going to be disrupted with any boundary change. And just like someone made mention also, you know, the traffic around schools is, is very precarious, but that's a given. You're going to have traffic around schools, so if you live around a school, there's going to be traffic. If you don't want to be bothered by that, then you better not live around a school. I mean, that.
Yeah.
Sue says, says somebody lives right next to a school.
Yeah, I live right by a school, a high school. If you think high school traffic's any better than elementary traffic, it is not, it's worse. But I'm just saying that, you know, and I choose to live there, so.
There will, there will be disruptions, but there's going to be more disruptions if we change the boundary as, as you're intending and I guess, you know, that's a possibility, but again, it's, it's adding to the disruptions. It isn't like, well, there's going to be disruptions anyway. We've tried to minimize at least the number of disruptions and the whole stability of the system, you know. When people come to choose to Waterloo or Cedar Falls or wherever it is, they do look at the schools. So when they purchase a house, I think it's at the disadvantage of the whole district if you change too often because then when, if they purchase a house in Waterloo and don't have confidence, there's going to be some stability there, then they're going to say, well, I'm not even going to consider Waterloo. And so, so that's part of where I'm coming from, saying, as stable as you can possibly be from the get-go, the better, so that's why the fewer disruptions. So if you take that whole area out and say, you know, there's just going to be that more people to say, hey, they pulled the rug out from under me. They, they changed and unless we absolutely have to, you know.
But, and I'm thinking, because we are grandfathering in, so this is not going to affect the current student, so it would be the students that are new going forward. So that's why I think that with the grandfather in, that is a real advantage when you're making a boundary change.
I do have additional comment on, on Orange. We did hedge our bets on that one a little bit, it is the only school that has the additional, the expanded classrooms, which was built as part of the original building, but most of our elementaries could be expanded to the same level, the most recent ones we designed. It is anticipated there will be a housing development right around the school, so we don't, you know, we don't know for sure that's going to happen or when that's going to happen, so it's not sacrosanct that, you know, we're reserving a specific number of spots, but we did, I think it's fair to say, hedge our bets to not completely fill Orange simply because of the, anytime you build a new school, it's probably going to attract housings around it, so. So, we hedged our bets a little bit on that, is that a fair statement?
Yep.
And also going forward though, I would like anyone to move to Waterloo to say, anywhere they moved in Waterloo, they were going to go to a great school. So, that, that's my goal.
And I, I think for everybody here, what you're seeing is the push and pull of coming up with a boundary, it's never just right, there are things that you get pulled in different directions as well. Some of this has been precipitated by Kingsley, but in other ways, this has probably been building, looking back on it for years. And we're lucky in that Orange does, was built with greater capacity. I would agree, by the way, I think Pointer is probably the next logical step and fortunately Pointer with the ground there at the former, was that Saint, Saint Nyx? I think the, yeah, I mean, there's a good area of land there where it could be expanded, but you just see different problems with enrollment in school buildings. I know at Kingsley, it's, it gets tough to get all the kids physically in the gymnasium, like for an all-school assembly and that stuff, so you think about that, but also you don't want to disrupt homeowners and parents and families, you want to disrupt them as little as possible. So it's a lot of, as I said, push and pull back and forth on that and trying to figure out what's, what's best for everybody. So, with that said, I appreciate the work of the committee and I support this as well knowing you're never going to find a perfect plan on boundaries and there may certainly be adjustments or changes between now. There certainly will be boundary changes in the future, I don't know if that's five years or ten years or whatever it is. And we look at it every year.
Wait, I, I suppose arguably, we could have taken a very wide swatch or swath, what would the correct, swath? Thank you. We, we, we could have absolutely tried to do this for a ten-year plan, but we tried to do it for four or five years, is that fair? And then watch where the numbers go and disrupt less? That's, that's what we were trying to do. So, yeah, every school district has to, to look at boundaries every now and then.
Because the one thing that's left out of all this, and even as we talk about the software that you go through where, where kids are now, none of us have any idea where people are going to live and where students, which houses will have students. So you're, you're probably eighty percent certain that you could probably draw that correlation, but maybe twenty percent, it's just you, you try to get as, as high of a number, I guess, probability as possible, but knowing that patterns change, neighborhoods turn over and change with more kids coming in or sometimes not, and so we'll adjust as we go through it, but.
In the, what is the history of boundary changes for the district?
Boy, there've been some really massive changes with school closings from the eighties.
Within the last twenty years?
I think it was.
I think eighty-eight was a major shuffling when Central became, went from a high school to a middle school and I think that was everything. I think eighty was, nineteen eighty was massive because a lot of like Washburn and some of the smaller schools closed. I think those, since those days, they have not been, it's been more like this.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, where it's usually elementary.
Yeah, we're pretty.
Pretty stable.
Pretty stable.
Yeah.
It's been, yeah.
Yeah, you're not closing schools, you're just trying to balance.
Yeah.
I wanted to ask about this software, the dots, is that just a family that has a, somebody going to school? Does that tell you how many?
The dot can represent.
Why they're like?
More than one student. And we had other lists we were working with from, from the dot. So this is just one view of the data.
Okay, because it could also tell you the age of the students, so whether, you know, if they're going to graduate in the next year, then you don't. if they're going to graduate in the next year, then you don't have anybody there.
Yep. Has all that information.
And, and maybe we're wrong, Sue, on that changing more. I mean, one of the consolidations, of course, was Edison and Blackhawk. And so that's why some of those students are a long ways away from, you know, the far end of Edison, long ways away from Blackhawk. But right or wrong, we've elected to gradually, in this case, we could accommodate some of those students in, in closer schools, but, but have elected to maintain as much as we can the original district, even if it's a consolidated school, so I don't know.
And Dr. Norris, if I could put you on the spot a little bit, and what we talked about here is setting this in motion now, and that the plan would be, when I talked also about that push and pull, it's notifying people in families as soon as possible.
Correct.
Before changes are made. But what we've talked about doing is setting this now so that it would become effective next school year, but sending out letters shortly, soon, again, talk a matter of weeks or.
Well, especially if you didn't accept number three, it'd be, we'd have to get, you know.
Yeah. Oh, if we were setting it for July 1st of 2014, meaning two weeks.
So I, so I don't think the urgency is quite as much there as if we didn't do that.
Okay. But looking at probably this summer?
This summer, yes.
I think that's actually an advantage to give people that year's notice.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
It really is.
Yeah. Okay.
So could we re-rev it, like adding the pointer back in?
Oh, it's really easy to do, and, and the pointer one doesn't involve any students or just, so.
I'd be really curious about that Kimball line for you.
Are you talking about how many more kids that?
Yeah.
I'd be happy.
How that would alleviate Kingsley is what I'm.
I'd be happy to get that for you. It's a, it's just a, it's about a five-minute exercise on Lori Mills' computer, so I'll get that for you.
Well, because just with Lyle's concern with disruption, I'd like to see what the disruption level would actually be.
Well, it's that, and, and the other thing in that case is the adjacent schools are full as well. Lou Henry.
Irving. No, that would be Irving and Kittrell.
Irving has, well, Irving has.
Irving has space.
Some space.
Yeah. Kittrell would be a little, Kittrell, Irving.
Three.
And what I'm, I'm thinking is by the recommended motion, it's to really start the process going in that, but it can also, it, it's not up necessarily for a final vote on the actual boundary lines.
No.
Right now. And again, that gets back to the, the dilemma you have in the balance is, do you set up a plan so people know exactly what it is that doesn't allow for any modification, or do you put it out there to the public if it's, then causes concern because it's not finalized? And it's, yeah, it makes people more concerned, so.
So in a, in a perfect democratic society, you know, everyone would get a letter and saying at some point, the board's going to be voting on it, and then they certainly couldn't come back and say they weren't told and that, that it all happened under dark of night or whatever. So, I mean, technically, we send out the letters and just tell them at what time, just like when the city was doing a meeting, you know, what's, when it's going to be on the agenda for a final vote.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Well, and because I, I sent you a note, that one group there, I specifically had a friend that came and addressed the board that is removing from Lou Henry back to Kittrell. They moved just when Lou Henry opened from Kittrell to Lou Henry, and now they're going to be sent back, you know, so that's disruption.
It's always been Kittrell. It's always been Kittrell.
Yeah.
Yeah, and some of those, we're, what we're looking at on the map, there, there are areas that are sometimes closer to the school that they're going back to.
That, that at the time, that area was pulled into Lou Henry specifically for the demographics.
Right, that's what you just said.
Oh, okay.
And so we knew it was a lot closer to Kittrell, but the demographics have changed now, so that, that kind of allows us to, to push that back to, to go back to Kittrell.
Because the proximity is closer.
Oh, it's much closer to Kittrell. But, but that was the specific reason that was put in Lou Henry to begin with.
But I'm just saying, disruption of those families are going back and forth.
So unless you set a special meeting to deal with it sometime, your next meeting is July 21st, and so you could, whatever is your option tonight, you could move this, like we say in the motion there, move it forward by setting the date to July 21st or later, and direct the administration to send out letters telling them which areas. And you can weigh in tonight when you vote on this, whether we're going to continue grandfathering and about the effective date. And then you're going to, that you're going to give them on January 21st, and they don't take effect till a year from then, you give them, like Mike said, a full year to do what they need to do to get. Yeah, sorry. Sorry, July to the next July.
And with that, is everybody comfortable? We need to make sure we change in the recommended motion, that's Mike, and Andrea, if you're comfortable changing that in paragraph four of the recommended motion, is it setting the, setting the permanent desired enrollment of Kingsley's school at 360? Are you comfortable with that change? Is it be changing the name capacity to enrollment?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. So with that, the way the motion is set up, just as Dr. Norris alluded to, and I'm thinking here, if we're not setting these into place, and it sounds like nobody's thinking about doing it this school year, we have until next school year, that we would have until our next regular school board meeting on July 21st to do that. And I think with the way this motion is written, it would still allow for that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So by approving this, we're just moving the process forward, not necessarily voting on the lines yet.
On the actual lines now.
Not today. You're not voting on it.
Seems reasonable.
But also, I, I think it is important to tell the public that here's what we're looking at. It might be tweaks here or there, but it's generally, yeah.
It's almost like one of your board policies. Two meetings, so first, this is the first reading.
And that gives people a plan to chew on it as well, but also understand that we are moving forward, we're doing something. Yeah. Okay. Everybody good with that procedure?
Right, yeah.
We might have a little more doubt on coming here with that, but.
That's true. Yeah.
Yeah. That's what she said.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? If not, we'll vote on the revised motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried.
And could, Mr. Young, could we put the date, July 21st in there? Is that, or would you rather not at this moment?
Yeah, I, I have no problem.
Well, it says by setting the date, is, is that the date? You want to deal with it?
I think the date there is July 1st, 2015.
Yeah, but he's talking about to set it.
I'm talking about where you will have your final meeting.
Oh, yeah, I see that.
Well, if we're going to revise and have new information, I think, I think July, I think it needs to be the one after July to give people.
A chance to.
The July meeting.
Okay. What I'd say is maybe we leave it here, and we'll try to get the information out to the public as quickly as possible. But I'm thinking I could also, do we have a facilities meeting set for June?
We don't currently, but.
Maybe set one up between now and then, I'm thinking, too. It's tough to schedule.
It's the day we're doing it.
Reports, okay, got you, that Wednesday.
No, we're still sending letters out, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, but to send letters out as well.
Mm-hmm.
What I'm thinking is maybe we just leave it as is right now and then be able to disturb, we'll let people know as soon as possible. Is that fair?
But we're going to, but we are modifying the evidence deal. Is that correct?
Yeah, we would have to do it, just depends at what meeting do we do it.
But there's no real families involved anyway, is there?
Nope.
No, that's, that's a good point.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so that's not going to affect it either.
No.
All right.
No, that's a good point. Okay. So with that, we'll leave it without saying July 21st, but that, that's a, that's a definite possibility. All right, the next item on our agenda is board policy changes. This is Exhibit J on page 67 of our board packet, and this is up for first reading. We have three policies here to be amended, and they are Policy 109.0, which is complaints by citizens, Policy 701.9 regarding gifts to the school district, and then finally, Policy 901.11 regarding examination of school district records. And Tara Thomas, who chairs the policy committee, is here to give us some background information on these.
Thank you, Mike. So the first one, proposed change would be 109, the complaints by citizens. Essentially, this is just a housekeeping maneuver to strike the language that normally would be found in the regulation from what was currently included. So it referenced will be governed as set forth by Regulation 109.0-r, and then all of that language would then be moved to the regulation to keep it consistent with how other policies are displayed. The next one, proposed gifts to the district, 701.9, the additional language added is underlined and the school improvement plan of that building to ensure that a gift would align with an individual facility's plan. And the language, including technology support, is in reference to gifts that sometimes do require some technology support so that we can be sure that we have the staff and resources to handle that addition. Item 14, district or school named in crowdsourcing request, defined as the practice of obtaining services, equipment, or money from an online source on behalf of students or classroom. This is just to update our policy with the times. Because of the proliferation of internet donations, we now see that there are some concerns via crowdsourcing to make sure that all of those requests for donations via online donations are in line with our district policies and procedures. And the last one being 901.11, examination of school district records. This was to add just the additional language of technology, infrastructure, and security documentation in regard to the potential, the heightened potential of cybersecurity threats.
Okay, I see.
I don't know if it belongs here, but do we have any safeguards, or do we check that people aren't soliciting on behalf of Waterloo schools, and, and they're really not?
They were.
They were?
That's what precipitated the policy being altered.
Okay.
When the crowdsourcing requests were being made, we wanted to make it clear that if an individual were representing him or herself online as an employee of our district, that that donation request aligned with the district policies on being able to handle the gifts in terms of resources to support it, as well as retaining those gifts should an individual move on from the district.
So I'll give, I'll give you an example. Someone, there, there's all kinds of websites now that deal with, for educators or teachers. So a teacher can get online and say, I want 10 Chromebooks for whatever, and I'm going to use them like this. And we wanted to set up a process that would say, first of all, your policy already permitted the fact, or provided for the fact that those gifts go, they are property of the school district, right? That's number one. Number two, we wanted to have a process where Matt could look at technology, where Marty could look at building changes, just like all other gifts, and so we, we just had to tie all of this in, because there were interesting questions and things starting to crop up.
Well, also encouraging initiative from teachers and the people who want to give, and it's, it's finding that balance as well. Yeah.
We also had a discussion about the fine line of when a teacher has something in her classroom. Did, did that become?
We didn't alter the language in that particular policy, but we had discussed that this policy of gifts to the district, if you look at that paragraph below.
Yeah.
That it says all gifts shall, except as otherwise agreed, become district property. So this was what we had determined really was already covered.
Right. For an example, if a teacher would get something for a classroom and then move to another building or something, or even out of the district, that that would stay with the classroom.
Oh, what happens with a gift?
Obviously, there are small issues that a teacher would take with her, but if it was a larger item, that should really stay with the district, so.
Well, and we did also talk about the intent of the gift, you know?
Right.
If I'm going to give my teacher a book and say, this is for you, or this is for your classroom, we don't want to be the police dog.
Right.
If I bring my teacher a book and an apple, I've got to give it to the district.
Right.
I mean, come on. End of year, they probably got a lot of gifts.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe.
But you, you.
Me not.
I think you have that.
The analogy, you said dog, the analogy I think of is there's a reason we don't give gifts of dogs, puppies, to friends.
Right.
Because it's like, oh, look at this cute puppy, and now I'm leaving, and you're going to deal with it for 10 years. Yeah. 15 years.
I'm going to have those.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So it's going to be unintended consequences, but you don't want to be ungrateful either.
You've lost control, Mr. Young.
I suppose you don't have a comment for that one.
All right, any further questions or discussions? Okay, again, this is for first reading, so we'll vote at it at our next, for approval at our next board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tara.
Thank you.
All right, and we will, I was going to say table the IAS 3 grant. I think the term is postpone.
Postpone.
Postpone agenda item is, item B on page two regarding the update on the Iowa Safe and Support of Schools. So we will postpone that to another meeting. And with that, that concludes our action items on our agenda, but we'll hear from Dr. Norris with his final superintendent's report.
Well, let me tell you about an exciting email we got today earlier this morning. The school district was awarded the SIG grant, $1.5 million, and I want to, for those listening that do not know what it is, it's allowing us to bring some huge and significant changes to Cunningham School. They were designated a PLAS school, and federal money will make a huge difference, as it has at Lincoln and other, other places. And so we're really pleased about that, and I know Jane wouldn't tell you this, but the grant that she and her team put together scored 80 out of 80 points. Which is why Jane is tired all the time.
That's been done for her.
Yeah, exactly. But Jane, I'm proud of you and your team, and, and I know you had some help, but yet you did the lion's share of the work, so thank you so, so much. It's great news for the kids at Cunningham and the teachers and et cetera.
So the, the plan is being developed, or was that prescribed in the grant?
The, this, the backbone of the plan had to be submitted. The bells and whistles and details are, are yet to be developed, but we do know things like start date, how many days of school. We are adding, let's see, teachers will come back on August 5th, students would come back on August 7th. This also allowed for an extended summer school experience. We did some surveying of, of staff, we did surveying of parents, and there was a really strong desire to have full days. It's really tricky to have a half day sometimes with, with parents if they're working or, you know, coming to get them in midday, so the desire was definitely to do full days, and so we'll do those in July. I believe that starts on July 14th, but do not quote me on that, I believe that's the date.
Of, of this year?
Of this year, yeah, in just a few weeks. So we've been working on it just in case. We, we had pretty good indicators. We felt really good about the grant when it went in. I lovingly used the word, the phrase, money in the bank. I said, I knew, it was good. It was a good, very, he, he was. I, I did, I went down to his office and said, money in the bank, I guarantee it. And he said, all right. So, and, and it was, so.
But it was still nice to see. Did it come in today?
Uh, yes, and it was, we were told last Tuesday the announcement was coming, and then we were told it was coming on Wednesday, and then it was coming on Thursday, and on Friday, I emailed, texted, and called, and they were avoiding me. So today we got, they just, there was just nobody. I don't know where they were, they just were, they just didn't have it ready to.
For someone who used the phrase money in the bank, she was sure checking.
I was. I really wanted that confirmation, and so, yeah, we, it was, it's a really good, solid grant. Lots of input from staff, lots. Lots of input from staff, lots of input from parents on that, and we had great parents who served on the committee, and they were very helpful. So I think that's probably the reason it scored really highly, because we had a lot of input.
And there are pretty good guidelines on how you are allowed to spend this money, then?
There, yes, there are. With, I mean, there's definitely flexibility there. Probably the biggest part that is non-negotiable is the constant monitoring of the work every single month. The state comes, we have great dialogues, we pull data every single month. We have had, so I hear, the most success out of the state and possibly other states, too, just because we've had, we've just had a very focused approach on it, so had really good, really good results.
Again, is that federal or state?
That is, that is federal dollars that are allocated to each state.
Okay.
The state actually applies for money to do turnaround efforts, and then if they get that, then they in turn give it out to the buildings that are eligible. So it is federal dollars.
So is there a plan, or is it permissible to consider some project-based learning, particularly in the summer session?
He's, not going to be up on that.
Persistent.
Persistent, right. We are talking about that, but right now, I'm, I think that's probably a bigger, that means a bigger plan of attack to actually revamp the way, you can't just, you know, snap your fingers and have project-based learning. But what we did do was try to make sure that, because it's a full day of summer school and not just a half day, we tried to incorporate, especially in the afternoon, very active, you know, just lots of activities to keep the kids very engaged, and try to do some project-based things. I'm not sure that we're ready to kick off full project-based learning. If somebody said, "Oh, I hear you're going to have project-based learning at Cunningham," I'm not sure that that would be the case for the summer. We start in, what is it, four weeks?
So Lyle could get the designation of PBM, persistent board member.
Oh, PBM.
I just think it's an opportunity to explore that area, and if you don't have the...
At the elementary level.
Confines of some of the other curriculum, which you don't conceivably have as much in the summer, that would be a good...
I would definitely agree with that, but from my experiences, it's actually better to wait and have a planned strategic attack for rolling something out, because we, what we don't want to do is just say, "Do it," and then have it flounder, and then people say, "Well, project-based learning doesn't work."
Right.
Because we know it does. So I just, I think it's really better to have all of our ducks in a row versus we're just, uh, moving in.
So, a couple of other things I wanted to mention. Congratulations to our four Gold Star teachers.
Yes.
Sophie Phillips at Lincoln, Jeff Welsh at Bunker, Vera McGee at Orange, and Jill Hennings at Kitterell. They, we're really proud of all of them. The graduations, I thought, were outstanding, they went well, the crowds were responsive, it was very rewarding time for all of us. And, boy, Steph Mohorn, I just can't say enough about her. Steph just got the U&amp;I Legacy Award at Lincoln Elementary. And what that is, is that the entire Department of Ed Leadership decided to have this Legacy Award for people out in the field that were doing the work that they learned, at least in part, at U&amp;I. And so, all of the professors in the Ed Leadership Department selected Steph Mohorn out of quite a few nominees. They like to say that there's, I think, over a thousand practicing administrators in the state of Iowa that are U&amp;I graduates, and...
I think it's a 37% nominee or 40%.
Oh, it could be, it could be a huge number.
From U&amp;I. But anyway, Stephanie won the first award, so if you see Stephanie, congratulate her on that. And then, we taped the Steele report this last week, so that's going to be on in about another, not this Sunday, but next Sunday, my last interview with Ron Steele. So Jane, would you do me one honor? Would you come over here for a second? I just want to see what this looks like before I take off.
Oh.
See, you didn't even have to sneak around like you did in the other video.
You're not going to change the paneling, are you?
No, no.
Oh, in this room? Yeah. Looks good.
Well, Dr. Norris, thank you. With that, we'll go, if there's nothing further, okay. And this is a preview of things to come, but this is Dr. Norris's final regular board meeting. After, we do have a special board meeting that will talk more about the high school task force as well, but at this time, would ask for comments from board members. Does anybody wish to start?
Can I start?
Yes, please. Angela Weakley.
I just wanted to say, first of all, what a blessing it was to be able to sit on the stage and look out into the sea of faces of our future. I was sitting next to Mike, and I was like, "Mike, here they come, I'm going to start crying," and that was just amazing. Also, to sit here and then be able to hear Ms. Stevens speak with her passion. Her passion is how I ended up kind of at Ortberg College even, because her son made me go there. Her passion around education is the reason why I'm sitting up here. I share that same equity does not mean equal, but that we want to make sure that our schools are equitable for all students, and that is what I said to them when I first ran for school board, is what I was looking forward to. And so, I really admire her passion to continue to do that through her grandchildren, and it's not just for her family, that she does it for all students. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. And Sue Flynn.
Well, first of all, I just want to congratulate everyone for finishing another year of school. This is the last day of school, so way to finish strong, kids. And if anyone says that the last days are blow-off days, my son, a sophomore at West High, had four finals today. So, it is not a blow-off day.
Kept him busy.
He's really glad to be done. But, and I'm anxiously awaiting our test scores to, that should be forthcoming, and to show the hard work of all of our teachers, and the passion of our staff and our principals, and I look forward to that. And I just wanted to say to Gary that it has been a nice five years of getting to know you. When I first met you, I was somewhat, maybe intimidated a bit by you, and now I would call you a friend. And I just want to thank you that you brought a lot of change to the district. Maybe didn't make lots of friends, but that wasn't your job to come here to make friends. So I just appreciate all the hard, with me, though, now you, Mike. But I appreciate all the hard work you've done and all the changes you've made. I think the IB program, you led the charge on that, took us down to see that, working now on the high school program. The Promethean boards, you know, when they came out, now everybody loves them. I remember before I got on the board, people were saying, "Oh, that Norris brought all these boards," and I'm like, and everybody loves them. I think teachers wouldn't do without them now. So, you know, change is hard coming here in Waterloo, but you did a good job, and just appreciate all your hard work, and wish you well, and know that we have lots of good people here in Waterloo, that the good people outweigh the bad. And I just thank you for your service, and I thank you for the change agent you came in as, and the change agent you're leaving as.
Thank you, Sue. And Shanley McNally.
I shouldn't let you go before me, I steal my stuff. I wrote right here, "Last day of school, woo-hoo." So I was going to say to all the students to enjoy their summer, and to our families and everybody, enjoy these, the longer nights and the, you know, all that good stuff. So, and the other thing I have to say as a proud band mom is that we're going to try a new thing this year. The East High and the West High bands are combining for my Waterloo days. So I urge our community on Friday night to give a huge shout-out to both bands as they play together as one Waterloo band, because I think that is super cool, and I was just really excited to see it. My Waterloo day is great, Friday night.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, anyway, I just thought that was a great thing, and I thought it was a really exciting way to showcase both of our excellent programs.
Thank you, Shanley. And Andrea Sparks.
I just want to say thank you, Gary, for bringing so many good things to our school district. I was only been on the board three years, but before that, before I retired, I remember being in the school system, and the schools were just kind of bumping along without any real direction. And you could tell that when you were in the classroom, so. You have made a big, big difference. And tonight, I want you to go home and give Julie a hug, because I'm quite sure she has put up with a lot since you've been here, with all your hard work and that. So I'm glad you're going to go to Kansas and relax, please, for a while.
But Andrea, he does have two weeks to work.
Oh, that's right, don't go tonight.
He was keeping him on his toes, yes. Thank you, Andrea. And Mike Kinsey.
Again, want to thank Dr. Norris, and welcome our incoming superintendent, so I think we have a person that has carried us quite a ways, and now we have a new person that can carry on. So that's two good things. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And Lauschmann.
Well, like the rest, they've all sold my thunder.
Last but not least.
Really, whether it's IB, or the technology of Promethean, or even the bus, which status is still pending, but appreciate your support on that. The IT sharing with the city was new, and I still think the whole results of the 21st century is probably going to be the biggest and most productive change of all, so. So, thank you for that. Good luck. Goodbye.
Thank you.
Two more weeks, two more weeks.
And with that, Dr. Norris, many things have been said. This is kind of a different environment, I guess. We do, there's an event tomorrow afternoon for Dr. Norris here at the ESC, and we'll talk again, too, but please know, I think the highest compliment we can pay, and I've been repeating a lot lately, because it's true, I feel it sincerely, you're leaving the school district in a better place than when you arrived, which is the greatest thing we can ask for. I was, I was somewhat sentimental tonight in thinking about it. Some of the meetings, the dress code meetings stand out in particular, but there was kind of, the Promethean boards, it was a very good example, that that was something that was the right thing to do, but it wasn't without controversy or without doubters. And, Dr. Norris, you saw that through, and I think moved our school district forward, which helps kids. I think it's improved our, the environment for our schoolchildren, and I think it's set up well for the future. I think also another thing that you've done very well is create a number of very good leaders within the district, and I think one of those is right here, and we'll carry that on, so thank you for that. Dr. Lindeman, thank you as well, we're very excited to have you on board. However, you will be the associate superintendent for one more board meeting or board workshop, and that will be our next board meeting. It's a special meeting, but it'll be held Wednesday, June 25th at 9:00 a.m., and that's really to discuss the high school task force of kind of where we are. Dr. Norris, we'll have an opportunity to go back and forth, but also listen to Dr. Norris on where things are, because just as Lyle said, I think that's probably one of the biggest things, if not the biggest thing, that we'll, that we've been doing here for the last few years. So we'll be able to discuss that in length. It's from, scheduled from 9:00 to noon on Wednesday, June 25th. But with that, that today basically concludes the regular school board meetings for the 2013-2014 year. So thank you to everybody involved. Our next regular meeting after this will be on Monday, July 21st at 5:00 p.m. To everybody, have a great summer. And with that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
A second? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Thank you.
That didn't take long, did it?